All right, we'll now go to item three on the agenda, public comments, requests. Item 3.01, in accordance with school board bylaws 2.30. The time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members. And for the record, if you'd like to make comment, please fill out a comment, a speaker form and come up. The first commenter for this evening is James Day. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Dr. Jones and school board staff. It's kind of scary when you see a bus driver walk up this time of evening.
I want to first thank you all for the hard work that you all do. There is no way that I could work budget sessions like you all do and handle some of the stuff that our superintendent does. You all are in what I call a catch-22, but you are very much backed up and supported by employees for these difficult decisions that you all have to make. First, I'd like to introduce myself. My name's James Day. I have over 35 years of pupil transportation experience. Started as a school bus driver back in 1980 and retired last year after serving as high as a director of transportation. I have served on several boards for the Virginia State Board of Education. I hold a certification from the National Association of Pupil Transportation as a certified director. I've also held positions with the Virginia Association of Pupil Transportation. And what I wanted to do tonight is just bring a few concerns for it to you all that I see that are affecting our transportation department and morally, pardon me, the wrong word, but the people that are part-time contracted employees. Being a school bus driver or retaining and keeping school bus drivers can be very difficult. The job is a part-time position. It is a split shift in most cases. The systems around us, including ourselves, are having difficulty recruiting qualified drivers. One of the things that I have noticed is that we have some difficulties on being competitive with two large school systems on each side of us that are very heavy in recruiting. One of the areas that I've noticed that hurt us very much on being competitive is our salary ranges. We're not competitive when it comes to other systems near us that are offering guaranteed 30-hour weeks. Some systems are offering 11-month contracts. Those things for us are not options, but things that are optional to us would be a good living wage. So we've got to work on becoming more competitive so we are able to retract. We have to be able to retain and we have to be able to retrain folks that we have. We want to attract folks to come to us. We're a wonderful school system. There's a lot of neat things here in this little system that is amazing as a school bus driver, but we've got to get them to come through the door to our little city, our little school system. We have to retain those because when you lose an employee, there's cost to training. We want to retrain those to keep them on the top of their game.
Thank you, Mr. Day. I'm sorry, your time has expired.
I know that. It goes fast. So, thank you. But I have submitted a letter to you all with everything in detail. May I very quickly just thank you all for all the decisions that you all have to do. It's very difficult. It's hard, and it's very much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Allison Kuchma. Welcome, Ms. Kuchma.
Good evening. Allison Kuchma, 13 Fulton Avenue. Just very briefly, I just want to thank Erin and Phil specifically for the degree to which you communicate with the community. And I feel like you hear the constituents out here that are requesting a more open communication and that you are working hard to do that and you're very responsive to questions that we have. And I just wanted to thank you for that and thank you on behalf of others that are very impressed already that you catch on very fast to what that we out here are looking for in our school board. And so I appreciate your leadership in that regard. And so thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to mention was in reference to a letter that I wrote, and I just want to say, last year, you know, we conducted a great system-wide survey asking families of students with disabilities how well they felt the schools were serving our children, and the information collected was useful in identifying priorities for improvements. And I would just like to know, and I'll just follow up with everyone, and maybe John already knows the answer to this since he's the liaison to the committee, I would just like to know how this information is being considered by the board in its budget discussions, the results from the survey that was done last year. And I'd also like to know how the current plan for special education this year and this year that we're in and the coming year reflects a response to the issues that were revealed in that survey. I'm sure it's up at the special ed website or on board docs. And lastly, what are the methods for assessing and measuring progress in that regard? So those are my three questions about special education. Do I have a microphone now? I didn't before. And then I also want to put in a word for support of the teacher climate survey. Yet again, broken record. Think it's great. And if you don't have the money, where there's a will, there's a way. So just ask the community and we'll figure something out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. All right. Now we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Kimball, do we have other comments? Thank you.
We do, sir. A former school board member, Kiran Sharp, writes the school board and is providing information about Fairfax County and Arlington County tax rate and notes that both counties impose additional special taxes on commercial property. And he attaches some information for the school board's information and edification and review. Two parents wrote separate letters, Sherry Gilligan and Andy Yoder, writing in about our football program to offer their personal insights. Both have children who participate in the football program and are writing letters sharing the positive experiences that their children had participating in the football program. And finally, Mr. Day did provide some extensive information, as he mentioned, and that is attached for the board's review and information.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. We'll now go to item four, recognitions and reports. And, Dr. Jones, we have the Vipus donation for solar power panels and recognizing Mr. Tim Stevens, who no doubt biked here tonight, correct? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Keith Thurston. I'm president of the Village Preservation Society, and Tim Stevens here is with me. We appreciate the work and the effort the school board does and the collaboration that the village society has with the board over the years, and especially attention to issues of the trees and the environment relative to the construction of the schools and the redesign of existing ones. All of the programs that you do are important, and we think this is not only good for the city, but good for learning opportunities, too. Tim Stevens, and also a member of the board of Vipus. And Vipus gets involved in a lot of environmental issues. We plant trees, make recommendations on stormwater, habitat restoration, and we're also concerned about reducing greenhouse gas emissions and its impact on the climate. So as a result of that, we're very interested in seeing more renewable energy systems such as photovoltaic systems. And given the importance of schools in our community, there's really no better place than our schools for this type of a system. So we're very pleased this evening. We understand that you've taken the step to request a solar assessment study. We appreciate that. That's excellent. And as an indication of our good faith, we're more than happy to help make a donation to cover the cost of that study. And we also look forward to future collaboration with you. Sevi Padilla has been communicating with us a bit, and we encourage more of that and look forward to some good results. Thank you.
So a check for that assessment is here, and we'll hand it off to Hunter right now. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. We appreciate it. This is the recognition of us? I skipped over 4.01 because I was sheepish about recognizing ourselves. So often I don't feel like I recognize myself. Dr. Jones, would you recognize us?
I would love to recognize you. This is School Board Appreciation Month, and we just want to say on behalf of the entire school division, I know our entire community, how much we appreciate having such an engaged school board. I think this has probably been one of the busiest school boards I've ever seen in my career, where last night you were here until 12:30 in the morning and you get to come back again tonight. But just how much we appreciate what you do because you're asked to make some really incredible, difficult decisions, and not only during budget season, but just throughout the year. And I really don't think the average person really understands how much work the school board really does and what it means to be on the school board. So thank you for all that you do. There's a flower in front of you. Go home and put it on your desk or on your dining table. We would love to have you take a picture, and I know we're missing two school board members in front of these lovely banners. They're just precious. I think this one was Mount Daniels, and if I'm, this one on the left is MEH. But if we could take a picture, Mr. Brad, of our school board members in front of their banners, so we can say thank you.
All right, let's do it.
Yeah, you stand down there so they can see the banner in front of you. So it's awesome.
Will we take this picture?
Mr. Brad will tell you where to stand, down here.
Trying to get above, but...
Oh, you guys are over there trying not to be behind them.
Pending the, is there, will you check on our friends there?
I'll check on 5.01 if you can.
All right, let us proceed in the absence of our speakers for 5.01 to item 5.02, the Language Line demonstration. Good evening.
Thank you so much for everything that you do each and every day. There's no words to say how much we appreciate all the hard work that you've done as a school board. I'm here tonight to introduce a new interpreting service called Language Line. We gave you a brochure in your folder in case you haven't seen it. We are always looking for ways to improve communication with our ESOL families. In the past, we'd struggle on how to communicate with our non-English-speaking parents. It was difficult to find interpreters that spoke multiple languages that we need. And sometimes when we would get interpreters to come in, it would take days to do so, which would frustrate parents as you would expect. We also tried some digital interpreting apps, but sometimes they would not always interpret correctly, which was also frustrating. So we found this company called Language Line, and it offers 200 languages that we can access on the phone. We did some training at the school levels with our secretaries, counselors, administrators, and registrars. And we used French, Spanish, Mandarin, and I think it was just those, I think it was those three. And each one of those, when we did the trainings, we did about 10 different trainings, and we could access the interpreter on the phone in less than 12 seconds. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to do a little simulation. Mr. Bird and Mr. Clark are here. And Mr. Clark, in case you did not know, he speaks two other languages other than English fluently. So he is going to represent our ESOL, non-English-speaking parent, and Mr. Bird is our principal. So they're going to do a real brief simulation of what it looks like for when one of our ESOL parents would come into the school.
Okay, good evening. All right, so I dialed the number. See how long it takes me.
Welcome to Language Line Solutions. Please enter your six-digit client ID. For Spanish, press 1. For other, please enter your four-digit access code.
Are you able to hear that? Sir, I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear you. Let me try to see if you can catch me. My name is Tyrone Bird. I'm principal of George Mason High School. Okay, I'll call again. Thank you. Un momento, por favor.
Mr. Harris, this used to happen to Steve Ballmer all the time.
I think we recognize that voice from the Charlie Brown Christmas special.
Already did.
Because you're getting the Spanish person.
Okay. Okay, four-digit access code, all right? He's going to give me a Spanish guy. You talk to him. Yes, ma'am, he's with me. Okay, I'm the principal of a high school, and this gentleman is hopeful of registering his child for our school. Okay, he'll need to come back in the morning with proof of residency, that he lives within our city limits of Falls Church City. He'll also need immunization records and proof of birth or birth certificate.
So you said proof of residence, birth certificate, and what else?
Immunizations, shots.
Oh, shots.
Yeah, health record.
Muy bien. ¿Y a qué hora tengo que venir a la escuela?
En la mañana.
¿A qué hora, por favor?
At what time do I have to call?
Eight-thirty.
Muy bien. Muchas gracias por su ayuda.
Okay, thank you so much for your help.
Great, thank you so much. We appreciate your time. Bye-bye.
Muchas gracias por tu tiempo. Hasta luego.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Any questions? Does anybody have any, anything they'd like to ask about Language Line?
My only question was, I don't know if I missed it, Jeannie, this is available to whom in the division?
All four schools.
It's available to everybody in the division, preschool, elementary, middle, high.
Five.
The, we, central office. So whoever, whoever needs access, and especially for the teachers, we haven't had a chance to do the training with the actual teachers yet because we wanted to make sure our secretaries and administrators become comfortable with it first, and then we're going to open it up to the teachers. They can use it now if they have to. Our secretaries know that they can support them and help them with it. And it's very simple. The training doesn't last long, but we want our teachers to reach out to our non-speaking ESOL families and communicate with them. Where in the past, I think they were a little hesitant because they didn't know how to do that.
And we believe this will be definitely more cost-efficient for us to use Language Line. For example, if we need to, you know, have a 30-minute conference with a teacher and a parent, we pay for that amount of time, where when we contract out with a company, the minimum is two hours. And so we would be paying someone to come for two hours for a 30-minute session before. So we'll be able to be more cost-efficient with our time and use of funds.
And how are we getting the word out about this to the ESOL community?
We have, for every school, I just got in the mail, we have a placard that sits on all of the desks at the school buildings and in the registrar's office, and it has a message on there for the parents that we have languages that are available. We'll also push something out onto morning announcements and push it out to the ESOL families through an eBlast email system and let them know that we have it available. And we can do it face-to-face, kind of like the simulation here was, or we could actually do phone calls. So we call Language Line first. They then call the parent, so we could do a phone conversation. And we have like two handsets that we can use, so it's not passing a phone back and forth. So there's a lot of really good features to it. It's going to help support that communication.
And one of the other things that we need to work out is if a parent is calling in, figuring out how we can put it on our voicemail to dial this number if you need a different language. So we're working on that as well at the different school levels.
Yeah, my question was going to be, when I was at Thackeray, the child find coordinator said something, and she has difficulty if someone calls in and is speaking a different language, doesn't speak, she doesn't, the conversation kind of stops until she can find someone who can speak it. So, and that goes to the question of how do we, do you conference in Language Line or how does that work?
There's a three-way call system. We have new phones in the division, so we're trying to figure out how that three-way thing works. So we're working on that piece of it. So, yeah, because they're new digital phones, they're a little confusing, but we can do that. We just have to put them on hold, hope they don't hang up, and get Language Line on the phone.
Right. So, question. This is a nice list of languages, but it's not all-encompassing. So what happens when one shows up that's not on this list?
The list you have isn't the entire list. There's over 200 languages. This is just pretty much the main, the basic languages. So there's more than that. So what happens is we get on the, if we don't have the list of it, we get on the phone with Language Line, and if we don't even know the language, that somebody might come in like that, they will help us. So we can tell them we don't know what language they speak, we can't figure out which country they're from, and they'll get on and they have experts that work for the company that will determine that for us and help us.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. Thanks to our demonstrators as well. All right, so welcome, Trinendis, from Milestone.
I apologize for the maintenance.
No worries. We do it all the time, so please.
Actually, I was parked underneath the parking deck over at the school board building, underneath the parking deck, and as I backed out, I ripped the mirror right off my car. Is that, am I the only one that is like those steel columns? I mean, a little tight? Okay, so I'm not the first one to do that, so I was a little delayed, a little upset, trying to get my composure here.
I was in that lot this very day.
If you're having a bad night, I'm having a worse night than you.
And every, every time I back out of that lot, I think, is this going to be the time my number comes up?
Yeah, well, that's, you know.
My condolences.
I just got my car to the shop, too, so of course, after three weeks. Okay, so here we go. But I'm going to set that aside and...
All right, take a deep breath.
Take a deep breath, say thank you so much. I apologize again for being late. My name is Len Forkus. I'm the president of Milestone Communications, and I'm here on behalf of Chris Hernandez, who's our project manager for George Mason High School Tower. And so what I'd like to do is just share with you, I know that there may be board members that may not have been here at the time that we originally entered into a marketing agreement. So I'll just really quick, just kind of refresh memory of those board members that are here. Oh, you're all here? None of them are here? Okay, great. All right, well, then I'll give you, I'll start from the beginning then. Okay, that's, makes it, will make it even easier. So I founded Milestone Communications 16 years ago. We're based in Reston, Virginia, and we partner with municipalities to build wireless infrastructure on their real estate. We have over 50 partnerships in six states, representing approximately 2,800 locations, where we have the ability to be able to market those sites to different wireless companies to enhance wireless coverage in the communities which those properties are located. Several years ago, we entered into an agreement with the then-school board... Uh, several years ago, we entered into an agreement with the, the then-school board of the city of Falls Church, under when Dr. Berlin was here. And, uh, but we also have partnerships with Fairfax, uh, Prince George's, Anarundel, Frederick, uh, Prince William County Government, and, and a number of other municipalities and schools throughout Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, uh, South Carolina, and Florida. Um, so what we do, in effect, is, uh, we market, um, so I can get this going. We've been around for actually 16 years now, uh, we, over 2,000 sites. We've built over 150 towers, and what we do is we market the, the sites to different wireless companies to see if they have an interest in those sites being developed with wireless infrastructure. And sure enough, we got a phone call from Verizon, who had expressed an interest in building, having us build a tower for them at George Mason High School. If I can just give you just a, a little bit of, uh, a little bit of, uh, math on how the partnership works, and, and all 47-50, uh, relationships we have, it's all the same set of economics. Uh, we build a tower with our capital. We raise capital privately, um, and then we share 40% of the revenue that companies like Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Sprint will pay to occupy space on the tower. So right now, we've got an interest from Verizon. Uh, they pay roughly, uh, uh, $2,800 per month, which translates to, uh, $13,500 per year to the school. Uh, when we build a tower, uh, we fund a $20,000, uh, construction fee, as well as a, um, um, $5,000 fee for every carrier that locates on the tower. We designed the tower for five different wireless companies. Uh, Verizon's the first, but at George Mason, we know now that there's Metro that is, that is extending now to Tysons, uh, these companies are getting a lot more demand on their network for data. Uh, and then, of course, we also reserve space on the tower for municipal purposes, whether the schools have an interest in using it, or if you want to designate that space to be used for the city, uh, then that, that's up to you. But we reserve, we, uh, have a placeholder for that. What's happening in a nutshell is that the, the growth curve on the demand for data in the wireless networks is doubling every 18 months. It's almost following Moore's Law. And, uh, and the reason for it is mostly because of video. Uh, people are downloading video. They want to watch video on-demand. They want to send big video files to social media and so forth, and it's completely maxing out the network. And I know the folks in your tech department that handle the Wi-Fi routers for the schools know the same, the same demands are being placed on their networks as well. And so that's why the, these wireless companies have to densify their networks. So we take a, a very, uh, very thoughtful approach, uh, in helping these companies achieve their goals in densifying their network. So when they call and they ask if there's an interest in, uh, the school, uh, we work very closely with your school staff, the facility department, and so forth, to make sure we can select a place on the property that will not interfere with the short-term and long-term use of the property as a school. And, uh, and then the next thing that we do, once we get approval to move forward, which obviously would be, uh, uh, up to you all after tonight, um, then we would then go about the, uh, pros, entering into the process of drawing up plans, uh, getting consent as to where the site should, where the best location would be. And then we go through a, an outreach process with the community to transparently inform them as to what we're doing, how we're doing it, why we're doing it, and when. And so the first thing that we do is we build a website. And on this website, this is an example of a site we built for a school in Anarundel County. Uh, on the website, we have information about the approval process. We will fly a balloon at the height of the tower, and we'll take photographs from throughout the community, and then we'll superimpose a photograph of what the tower will look like in a before and after. We put those pictures on the web. The next thing that we do is, uh, we put the schedule as to when the town hall meeting will be held, and, and ask people to place, we put a placeholder for when the, the meetings will be scheduled, uh, for the, uh, for the appropriate public hearings and public approvals. We also show a coverage map that shows before and after, and how the coverage will be improved. And then we will also meet with the planning department and, uh, work with them to designate which homes they would like us to directly communicate with. We always communicate with the homeowners associations around the site, but also we'll work with the staff to make sure that we include as many people as possible that we, uh, that we communicate with. We typically, uh, will print up a, a card that looks like this. They will list the website for the tower, uh, and then identify the location of our town hall meeting, put it in the, in the notice. Uh, most times, we do it in both English and Spanish. And we want everyone in the community that has an interest in following what we're doing to know well in advance about what it's gonna look like, where it's gonna go, and why it's needed, and what the schedule is before we hold the town hall meeting. So that when people come to the town hall meeting, they come informed, and they have, and if they have questions beforehand, they can communicate with us. But we also, obviously, allow, we, we want to hear their voices and make sure that their voices are heard. This is the process we go through in, 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 uh, all of our school sites. Um, on this particular site, uh, it's, uh, it's going to be, uh, a tower that will be proximate to an existing light pole. I think we're in the process of determining whether or not we put a new pole in, or we replace a light pole. I'm not sure if that decision's been made just yet. But this is an example. This is Stenaville High School on Fairfax County. In this particular instance, we built two towers. Uh, the first tower was designed for three carriers, and then there was a, a second tower that was built for two more. But this gives you an idea of, of what towers look like on lighted athletic fields. Um, we've done over 30 of these towers, uh, and we, we tend to like these because they, they blend in with the vertical, tall vertical elements in the, in the environment. The proposed site, uh, at this juncture, is a light pole replacement, uh, on the 20-yard line on the, on the football field at the high school that's most proximate to Interstate 66, which is the center of the coverage objective for Verizon. I believe the tower height is around 120, 130 feet in height, uh, and so if we, if we do go forward with a light pole replacement, we take down the light pole, put up a stronger pole, replace the lights, and then the carriers would occupy space above the tower. Uh, our experience in 15 years of doing business is, on average, within seven years, we should, we expect to have three wireless carriers on this tower. This tower will generate roughly $40,000 a year in recurring income, growing at 3% per year, in addition to the $20,000 construction fee, and then an additional $15,000 in fees that will, will come as a result of, uh, the additional carriers locating on the tower. So I've, I've pretty much kind of given, given you all the, you know, all the basic facts, but I'm obviously here to answer any questions and, and, uh, would, you know, ask for, ask for your approval of us to go forward with this application.
Thanks, questions?
Can you, Mr. Ranko? Can you refresh my memory on how long, when, when you sign the contract, and when does it start, or how, for how long the duration? What's the duration of the contract?
Yeah, so, um, we would sign a lease after we got approval from Fairfax County Government, the sites in Fairfax County. After approval is consented to, then we would enter, enter to a lease with you, and that lease would be for the, uh, a term of roughly 40 years. And then the leases that we have with the wireless carriers are 10-year initial term, and then they have four five-year renewals. And so we anticipate over the course of the next seven years, we're gonna have three carriers, so we need roughly a 40-year term to be able to allow the carriers to stay on the tower for 30 years.
Why would you need to go to Fairfax County?
I'm sorry? I believe the property is physically located in the county of Fairfax.
No, it's, used to be.
Used to be.
Oh, okay.
It's been adjusted.
Alright, then we would go through, I, I'm not the project manager, I apologize.
No, no, no.
It would be through the city of, the city of Falls Church.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Um, so would the community, so you talked about the public hearing process. Does that mean that, so even, let's say we entered into an agreement with you to put the light pole there and work with Verizon. Does the community, does Falls Church City have to approve that, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so our citizens would still have to come in? How would that work?
Well, since I thought the site was in the county of Fairfax, obviously, I'm not very well-informed on the process, but my guess is, my guess is that it most likely would go to the planning commission and then go for the, uh, the city council for vote. And the, the planning staff in the city would evaluate it based on its merits, based on their policies for wireless, wireless towers.
Thank you.
So there's a tower on the other side of 66, right?
And... Over near the metro station, I believe.
Right.
Yeah.
How, uh, are there more? I know... The sites are getting increasingly dense. Will there be other tower opportunities in our future, or, or at least for this corridor? This would seem to be the only one, most likely, right?
So at this juncture, this is the site that was selected by Verizon, uh, as a location where they need additional infrastructure. But we, we anticipate over time, as ridership continues and as more and more people use their devices, that the other carriers will follow suit by locating on this tower. Uh, will there be other towers nearby? All I know is that Verizon has looked at a number of other locations. Uh, I believe there's a site at Metro they're looking at, another site for Dominion Power, and they like this site the best because it will provide them the most amount of capacity for their, the type of equipment they want to locate on the tower.
And in terms of the special access, um, it's tempting to, does Verizon do in-kind, uh, contributions? If you, if, if you're running the connectivity to the tower, uh, you're going right by a couple of schools, and it's always nice to have more bandwidth. Uh, has, is that something that's ever happened before?
You know, a lot of, a lot of school board members and elected officials have asked me that question in terms of, are there other benefits that Verizon can provide to the school other than revenue or in addition to revenue? And, uh, and, you know, these, these wireless companies, they're all in silos. I mean, they all, the, the wireless, the wireless guys don't talk to the wireline guys. The wireline guys don't talk to the fiber guys at Fios. They're all in their different silos. So there's no economic trading that occurs internally with those companies. The, the wireless guys, their, their, their currency is rent. That they pay to me, and then I in turn, uh, you know...
We could get them to run an OC-192 into there, and we could peel off a little bit of that, yeah? Just a thought. Okay, um, a, a couple of things that, that you should know, we're, we'll, there's a lot of work we have to do, so we won't be taking any action on this tonight. Obviously, this has been a long time coming, and, and there'll be a little bit more to do. But it, it looks like a, a great opportunity. I don't know if there are any other questions, but, uh, oh, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. Um, one question is, you, you build for each tower to have, um, room for five firms, but then room for schools, city, what else? Does that mean you, if, if we said we didn't need space, you could put more firms on there? Or is it basically, you do sets of five, whether, you know, you showed one where you had three on one and two on another? Is there any flex?
Yeah, so we designed it for five broadband carriers, like Verizon, T-Mobile, and so forth. And then we increased the steel and the concrete for initial roughly 20% more, so that if, uh, there was a, if you wanted to put an equivalent amount of loading on the tower that was equal to what the wireless companies use, then we would have that capacity available for you.
Right, but if we didn't want to use that...
Then if there were a sixth wireless company that were, were interested in renting, we'd be able to use that, that capacity for additional revenue.
Okay, so there, it's structural. It's not that there's any reason you have to stop at five. It's just, that's generally what you do.
And each carrier has different requirements in terms of how much loading they want to put on the tower, like T-Mobile's equipment's not as heavy and has as much wind loading as Verizon. But the idea is to build as much steel and concrete strength to be able to accommodate the users for the next many, many years.
Okay, and you, you talked about terms. This thing needs to get put in place and then stay there for how long?
Well, we, we anticipate that most, most of the leases we sign with Verizon, for example, and AT&amp;T are 30-year leases. 10-year guaranteed rent, and then four renewals of five years each. So they want to have at least 30 years of term on the site. And so we don't know when Carrier Two, or Carrier Three, or Carrier Four may come. That's why we asked for a little bit more, more time from you. But the idea is that we want to be able to allow the structure to, to be able to, you know, meet the need of the wireless, the wireless carriers. However, we do have a provision in our lease agreement that after 15 years, if that tower located in that location is interfering with your use of the property as a school, like for example, if you wanted to use that, that football field for something other, after 15 years, we will pay for the cost of moving it. All we ask is that you provide an alternative location on the real estate for us to move it to. So we don't tie your hands for the next 40 years with that tower in that location. For the first 15 years, that's a, we can't recapture our cost, so it would be on you if you needed to move it within the first 15 years, but after that, we'll move it.
Okay, um... That's, that's it. Thank you.
With respect to the other uses that, the, the reserve tower space for the city or the, for the schools, what, what sort of things have other divisions done with that?
Okay, so, um, in, um, I'm trying to remember the name of the county. It's just outside of Jamestown, York County. We built a tower, and, uh, they're putting a 911 antenna system on it with, uh, whip antennas and a microwave dish. So we designed the capacity for that. So it's not a tall, these aren't tall towers. Most of the 911 towers are, you know, much higher. But that was one use, um, mostly for microwave, to receive and send microwave signals. That's a common use. But to be honest with you, you know, not that many, uh, owners have actually used the space in the tower, but it's the placeholder for them if they choose down the road.
Okay, alright. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your coming out, and again, I'm sorry about your, uh, your car.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you again. I apologize for being late. Thank you.
Alright, now we come to item 5.03, uh, George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School schedules.
Well, we're going to invite Mr. Bird, Mr. Harris, um, forward, and they've done a tremendous amount of work as, um, staff in both buildings to try and coordinate their schedules going into next year, and thank you. I know I told you you'd be on by about 8:20, so it's later than I thought. Because I started my day with both of them, so I know they've had a very long day. Um, but they've done a lot of work, and one of the first, you know, challenges of middle school, high school schedules started actually two years ago, and that was changing the bell schedule. Because if you remember, middle school used to start at 7:30, so that was the first challenge. Um, the next challenge has been, can we get their schedules more in order? So I'm gonna turn it over to them and, uh, let them talk about advantages of what they're planning for next year.
And while you're logging on, Mr. Bird, I will repeat my offer to buy you, uh, a piece of Denver Broncos memorabilia.
This guy, every time. Oh, okay, gotcha. So we're gonna play nice. We're not gonna do that. And, um, before I begin in earnest, let me, let me first apologize that George Mason did not contribute a banner to you this year. Um, I try not to make excuses, but I got a pretty good reason for this one. Um, Ms. Marty reached out to us early in the month, gave us plenty of opportunity to do this. Maria Shields used to be responsible for putting together our gift, and she retired. And I did not communicate to the arts department that we needed a gift, so a gift is forthcoming. But, but regardless of that, please, please accept my thanks, my deepest gratitude to each and every one of you for all you do. There's not enough money in the world or diamonds on the earth to pay you guys for the, for the, for what you do for us. I really, really do mean that. Each of our teachers believe that as well, so, so thanks, and a gift's on its way. Check, check's in the mail. New. Why? And, uh, we won our basketball game this evening, so congratulations to our boys' basketball team. Road trip Thursday. Uh, no. What do I do here? Turn it off, okay. Okay, so the rationale behind our, our decision to combine our schedules, Ty Three, I'm Ty One, he's Ty Three. T Three, there's no T Two. We need some space between us. So he's, he's the bad one. I'm the good one. Just know that. Um, so...
Age before beauty, right?
There you go. I like that. Um, so we would like to increase our instructional offerings. Right now, 27 students at MEH take a class at George Mason High School. That number's gonna go up exponentially next school year. We're thinking somewhere around 80. 80 students at George, at Mary Ellen Henderson's are gonna be taking a course at George Mason High School next year. They're taking world language courses. We've got like 15 kids in Mandarin One. We've got several in Mandarin Two, mathematics kids. I don't know what we're gonna teach these kids when they're seniors in mathematics. We'll worry about that later. But we've got, we've got a sixth grader at George Mason, at, at George Mason taking a mathematics class. So, so we're, we want to expand our opportunity to, to, uh, offer courses at the high school level for kids who are prepared for that challenge. Uh, we want to enhance instructional opportunities for our faculty. Uh, members of the Mary Ellen Henderson faculty can teach our kids and vice versa. We would like to exchange those kids and give our teachers a chance to teach something maybe that they haven't taught in a while, or something that they're interested in teaching. They're gonna spend some time over the summer getting some professional development so that they can go teach those courses, maybe not at our school, but at the middle school, or from the middle school to the high school. Uh, create opportunities to work collaboratively and develop faculty, so we have a shared mission now. We want to move toward NYPD, um, so that we can offer the entire continuum to our students from PYP to, to the diploma program and everything in between. So we hope to share a mission with one another, which also means we're gonna share resources, human and material. So we get together to develop plans with one another. Uh, we teach cross-curricularly and also vertically articulate our, our curriculum through the school system. Uh, and the material, we buy it once and we can share it, as opposed to having to buy it for each building. We can share it, so it's gonna be a cost savings as well. Um, and it's great that we have, um, like, uh, Katia Taylor teaches at both schools, um, Tina Cow teaches at both schools, and, and we think those are awesome opportunities for our, for our, for, to cross-pollinate our school system. Um, meet with middle school, middle-year program requirements. Meet with middle school, middle year program requirements. We have to collaboratively plan to meet the requirements of NYPD. Doing this without a structured, when you guys get us a new building that's connected, we'll be able to do it easier, but right now, we walk right across the parking lot and we can engage each other to develop collaboratively. We have to have an interdisciplinary unit that includes at least two courses of study each year for each student in NYPD. So six through 10, they have to do that, so being able to combine and have a shared schedule will help us do that. Ty will talk about that in a little bit. And then NYPD projects, we're going to have, every kid in the 10th grade is going to do an NYPD project at the end of their 10th grade year. We're going to need advisors in both buildings to support those kids through that initiative, and it's nice that we'll be able to have the same scheduling so that they can gather with those students and do those things.
So I'll start off by adding to what Mr. Byrd said with NYPD. Currently, the only time that our teachers are able to collaborate are during the short Wednesdays. And so MEH, we have one short Wednesday a month. That means, you know, the high school teachers, when they're finished with their classes, we have about an hour and a half for teachers in both schools to get together, sorry, sorry, can you hear me? To get together and collaborate. This is an initiative that, you know, we've bought into and that we're moving forward with, and so we need to provide those teachers the time to be able to meet by having a common schedule. We aren't tied to a particular window once a month to give those teachers time that they absolutely need to meet. And our advisor has suggested that we find a way to give those teachers more times to collaborate. If you look up, you see the schedule, Ty and the administrators at GM met with myself and John Pepper and Alyssa Jacobson, our guidance, head of guidance, and we sat down and we said, okay, what makes sense for us? And reality is, we don't have to make a major change here. Currently, GM starts about 20 minutes right before MEH, and what that does is it kind of puts us in a bind, because our kids that want to take high school credit classes at GM, they can only take it during first block. You know, we have a block schedule, so they would come to GM 20 minutes, or 20 minutes before we start, they'll take the class at GM, and then once that class is over, they come to MEH, they hang out usually in the front office of the library for 20 minutes, and then they go to their next class and continue on with their day. By aligning the schedule, we can give these kids three times the options to be able to take courses throughout the day, they're not just tied to first block. And so the schedule that we have here is kind of a mashup of both schools kind of making concessions and figuring out what would work. The start time would be 8:10 for both schools. We're still going to be at 90 minutes, 90, 91, 92 minutes per block, and in fact, the only difference here between the two schools is that second block, GM currently runs their Mustang block time, that's 30 minutes, and then they have, it's like 60 minutes for enrichment or for class. MEH's, we have a flex period, and it's during the flex time that we offer our response to intervention. This is our really heralded attempts at getting those kids that are struggling, the extra help that they need, it's a tiered intervention system. We can keep that intact and still do everything else that we want to do. And what that would look like, it's a 90-minute block, so even kids that are duly identified that need help in reading and math, they still can get 45 minutes in the same day, every other day, to get those interventions. And so really, nothing, nothing really changes for the most part, we just shift the times from beginning to end. GM has agreed to shorten their lunch period, they would knock out one of their lunches, and so both schools would have, serve three lunches in the same time window, and then school would end at the same time as well. We feel that this would be tremendously valuable for really our staff, obviously for professional development opportunities, but also for our kids, for parents that need to pick up kids from both schools, they're getting out at the same time, they're getting dropped off at the same time. I mean, I could probably go down a list of benefits, but I don't want to take the whole time.
Yeah, and then talk a little bit about buses. We know that there was a concern when we talked about combining our schedules in the past with buses and the concern about having younger children on the bus with some of our seniors, even though like Dorian, you're good with guys, little guys, right? Yeah, we're good with little guys. So, but we appreciate that our community is concerned about what goes on on a high school bus as opposed to what goes on on a younger child bus. So we're going to instead have the students at Mason dropped off early, so they're still going to be dropped off at the same time they were before, at around 7:30, but class won't start until late 10. So Mason students will have some time before school to get themselves together, kids who walk or drive to school still don't have to be at school until late 10, but there will be some high school students in the building, we'll open up our library, open up the cafeteria. Mr. Kane says that he could also provide a breakfast for students in the morning before school begins, and then after school, they'll be, we will still be picked up at around 3:07, is that what we said, Nancy? I can't remember in the afternoons. 3:26, so there's going to be some time in the morning and some time in the afternoon for high school students. Students who walk can leave or drive can leave, but students who ride the bus will be around for a little bit longer. So it is one accommodation that we'd have to make at the high school level, but we think it's more appropriate for the high school kids to deal with that. Our high school kids stick around in the afternoons, and we've noticed that our buses go home almost empty. Lots of students have extracurricular activities at our school or participate in a sport or visit with a teacher, things of that nature, so they're going to have to help us out and make that accommodation. Questions for this guy? No math questions, please.
Any questions? On the issue of 7:30 buses and teenagers in high school, is there any way to get some more sleep lined up for them, or is this pretty much the way the chips have fallen to make all this happen? And are you confident that the transportation influx of two schools' worth of people in cars and buses is manageable?
Basically, you know, what we're, kind of them coming in to go home and never have less buses in here, because we need a group ride into our downtown. That'd be a little bit more efficient. About time, but that's, but no school.
The trouble may come in when the buses are coming in and students who have decided not to come in at 7:30 or at 8 o'clock and wait until 8, 9.
I know a couple of people like that.
So there may be a few who might try to make that mad dash into school late, but hopefully they'll recognize that that does not benefit them in the long run, and they decide to come to school a little bit earlier.
Amen.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I would add a small comment that when it comes to clubs, a lot of people who don't have a ride home take the bus and miss their club meetings, but the way it works out that way, I mean, like, I like it a lot because it kind of forces people to kind of join clubs, and I think that some clubs also want to have like an easier transition period between their counterparts at MEH, and that would make it much easier. And so, yeah, I like that a lot.
Awesome. You're welcome.
There's another, don't want to take too much time, there's another component here, and that's, you know, obviously we want our kids to have these enrichment opportunities and exposure to after-school activities. Someone, for example, like Dr. Ruor, who is the TSA person, who's actually kind of over the high school TSA as well, this would give an opportunity for kids in MEH and GM to be in the same clubs, which is something currently, because of the time, you know, they'd be waiting around, waiting for him to get out at 3:20 or whatever time we get out now, and that's going to limit the time that they would have after school, so that's another benefit. And teachers have expressed interest in doing, sponsoring clubs, you know, with their high school, with high school students joining.
Just one last question, the schools are very close to each other, and yet there are some obstacles to navigate. What are the safety considerations of transiting kids from MEH over to George Mason?
Currently, in the morning, in the morning, they just walk over if they arrive. We do have a couple of students that ride the early bus, we got permission from parents to do that, but typically, the kids, they arrive, and then they just walk over to GM, and then once their class is over, they walk back over to the middle school. In the afternoons, we did discuss, you know, the buses and how they would need to be arranged. We have a very large loop, if we include the MEH loop, as well as that entire side on the backside of GM, where buses could, you know, pick up kids in the afternoon if they needed more space, but it wouldn't be a problem if we're doing separate runs.
Mr. Lawrence?
Just one question on having the high schoolers there, in effect, for, you know, 40 minutes. Have you talked to parents? Have they said anything about, you know, gee, they're going to get there and just sort of stand around, whether they, you know, would rather have them sleep more or have something else to do?
No, sir, we have not yet. We've decided to take this path first, engaging in the school board, whether or not it was something that you thought was feasible, and then we'd engage our families with conversations about the logistical components of it. Yeah, I'm not 100% certain that every family's going to be enamored with the thought of their child coming to school, but they do have a chance to come to school later. If they choose to stay at home and not ride the bus and use some other means of arriving at George Mason, they have that option, and then know that option is not available for each and every one of them, or for many of them it will be.
Yeah, oh yeah, and we know everybody is never going to like anything, so that's certainly
Really?
Not what we're looking for, but, no, I just wanted to ask, so I'm glad you're going to be reaching out.
Absolutely, we will.
And I might add too, I think the expanded options in curriculum kind of override a lot of that too, because there'll be a lot of excitement, I think that they have more options.
Yeah, I would say, though, that everything I've seen says the later high school starts, the happier and the better the students perform, so I would urge you to give, I'm surprised Mr. Charpentier's been so quiet on this point. But I would urge you to maximize the sleep for students who act like vampires sometimes, go to bed at, you know, 2:00 in the morning, so.
Are you offering to put buses in the budget?
Well, I'm looking to drones to get the job done.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you both for coming so late and staying so late. I know that you have had an unusually long day, and that's saying something, so we do appreciate your good cheer and willingness to go above and beyond the call.
No problem, go Broncos.
All right, there you go. I know that took a lot, so thank you, Mr. Byrd. All right, item 5.04, construction update, Dr. Jones.
Right, I don't have a lot on construction update other than with Mount Daniel, we are working on trying to get that 2232 hearing date. We have requested to get on the agenda, and we would like to have a hearing with that so that the new package can actually have that input, instead of just going to a vote and yes or no. So we will keep you informed as that happens, and again, we're working with our attorney on getting that set on the George Mason, you know, MEH project, just for the community. A school board, city council did have a joint closed meeting last night, it was a rather long one, finished, I think, about 12:30 AM, and so the city council and school board are still working through that process, looking at those proposals and making the decision about a detailed RFP, request for proposal. So that's where we are on both of those right now.
Any questions? The only thing I would say, I spoke, I've spoken to a few members on the board and also on council, and there is a desire to try to have as much discussion about the George Mason MEH project as possible, and I think it would be worth discussing, are there aspects of the consequences of the proposals that we could be discussing without getting into their merits, sort of trying to set some parameters for what some of the foundational questions would be. I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think it would be useful to explore, is there anything else that we can discuss?
And I think after we have our next joint closed meeting next Tuesday, then maybe we'll have some more direction on that from that city council, school board.
All right, great, thank you, Dr. Jones. All right, now we come to item six on our agenda, the closed meeting. Would somebody move us into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under section 2.2-3711, section 8, -1, in particular, staff reassignment, staff appointment, staff retirement, staff resignations, EPE deassignments, and an advisory committee appointment, and public safety under section 2.2-3711, section A subsection 19 in particular, discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any government facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons using such facility, building, or structure.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Kimble, would you call, please?
Mr. Ankuma, Mr. Castillo.
Hi.
Ms. Gill.
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reidner, oh, he's not here.
I do not anticipate that this is going to be a lengthy closed session, Dr. Jones, do you have an estimate about how long this will be running?
No, but 20 minutes, let's say 20.
All right, all right, very well, we will be back with any luck in 20 minutes.
Whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting at this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma, and Mr. Kimble's call.
Mr. Ankuma, Mr. Castillo, Ms. Gill.
Hi.
And Mr. Lawrence, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now we come to item eight on the agenda, the consent agenda. I would seek unanimous consent to adopt the consent agenda as proposed, without objection, so ordered. We come now to item nine, future agenda topics. This is where we discuss and take the temperature of the board, future agenda topics that can be put on meetings in the future. Does anybody have anything that they would like to bring up at this time? All right, thank you, that is understandable. We've had a lot of togetherness lately. Item 10 on the agenda, the superintendent's report, Dr. Jones.
Since it's 10 to 10, I'm keeping it very short. I do just want to mention, MEH's Lion King Jr. this past week was just phenomenal, and I was there Sunday for the finale for Ms. Biscopo, and she sang a song, and the kids sang a special song for her, so it was a great last show, really great. We also do have some steam nights this week, so if you get a chance and you want to stop by, MEH has one, and TJ also has one, and those are, our staff are just doing a tremendous job, so if you get a chance, stop by and visit, please do.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Now we come to board and student liaison comments. Does anybody have any comments, starting from the right, Ms. Gill?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
Honestly, we were here till 12:30 this morning, no, thank you.
Mr. Ankuma?
Other than I ran from a GT meeting last, yesterday to come to the joint school board city council session, not a whole lot, the GT committee is obviously, the advisory committee is still working on some of the issues they're facing, including the identification and recommendations on content and all that, so that was about it, and I had to leave halfway through, so at least I know they're working on it. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. I won't stretch our meeting out any further than it already has. Final item here is the approval of minutes. I would seek unanimous consent to adopt the...
You'll need to remove the first one, because there's not enough people that were at that meeting.
Ah, yes, because we're short there, yes, okay.
Right, but the others you can do.
So I would seek unanimous consent to approve the minutes for, the minutes of January 19th, 2016, the work session number one, as well as the meeting, the minutes of January 19th for the joint for the joint closed meeting, as well as the minutes for February 1st, 2016. Okay, without objection, so ordered. So we'll have to hold open those minutes for our next meeting. We have some materials for board review consisting of upcoming generally, well, the general assembly report. And with that, I believe we can adjourn. So you'll get, you'll get, maybe a good night's sleep. And we'll see you on Saturday. We'll have four meetings in one week. 9:00.